We talked about moving the meeting. But in May, in February, Christmas week. We talked about the nineteenth. And that's probably one of your busy days or something. What if we did eight to nine and it's seven to three in the morning?
That'd be awful.
Yes.
Can anybody do that? Eight o'clock or will you catch me this late?
You're doing a crisis.
Oh, yeah. It's an interruption.
That's right. So you have three choices. Would we do eight to nine here? Fire station? Or not live out?
Well, they can't do anything on the way when I'm leaving later.
Well, we can still leave. We can do that downstairs. Was everybody on duty?
Five o'clock, approximately. Nine to five.
Fire department. We talked about it. Part of these days, you're like.
I would be eight thirty, I could go back straight over. I couldn't get more busy.
Yeah, I can do that.
Get rid of that.
We should have.
Eight thirty, eight thirty, right about the nineteenth.
Okay.
Why don't we go with the first story of this week? When we're at the fire station. How long before is that?
It's not, it's not usual. Alright, so just some things that happened in the last month or so. So fifty thousand dollars that we got from the grant. This fourth equipment has been installed in our ambulance too. Forestry's kit unit that we got granted from the New Hampshire Forestry. Land Management. Forestry's kit unit that been ordered from the Gator. Tech, we're going to call them some drills. So we've had three in the last couple months. We're lost ideas and general ideas or whatever. So that definitely helped. Toys, cakes, and aggressive. So we usually get like a list of stuff. Do you? Do you have a list?
I have.
Okay, okay, perfect. Open house moved up. There are eighty to ninety people there. Thank you all for coming. If you can't make it, well, try and. Are we, I guess. Are we gonna get more guidance about raises and budgets?
I think we're gonna talk about that towards the end.
Uh, really, it's all.
Hi, Will.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're just getting prepared for the plow. Getting all the iron on. Getting you guys ready to get their route with our guys. We were very fortunate that the state has very foolishly changed their insurance requirements for their contract a lot of drivers. So we now are pulling staff for contract trucks or things. They lost our name. So we're good on that. And just trying to find out what's happening small cars. But we're looking like we're gonna be over. Plowing, which is great. We could sign a contract or the innovative sort of solutions, the pre-treatment stuff. I tell you guys about my take over, right? So that's all set up. Hopefully we hear, we got the next. And they'll come up with a creative session on that. Bell and Son is likely coming back to the show for a while. I'm going to Wester Park. I'm going to pond. I'm going to stun. You're after Wester Park tomorrow. And the stuff going on for all the other roads is kind of totally free. Unfortunately, it takes a while to get all the leaves. The crap, all the roads, and stuff. Trascan is here to be slowing down. Apparently there are still people that have performance in the crash. I think that's a, like, they're asking for it to look out. But today, there hasn't been any second person apply for a second. Correct me. I will make. I've been trying really hard to see if I can make it work. Okay. And I need to, like, commercial dumpster. I've got my business every week. And I was like trying to see if it'd fluctuate with just the noise and stuff. But I'm like, I have five bags. Well, first of all, my team's probably has like three bags on top of the opening in the lid. And I'm just trying to. And then I have four or five bags. But yeah, once, so. Once that is kind of figured out, we'll start coming on. We'll stay in the state shed there. We're just gonna work with the rest of their stuff. We should send out the notification for the shredder event. So they will be at the state shed first. And then they will be coming to the town hall shredding for that. We have not gathered all, I guess, to see how these guys work out if necessary. Or this could work every year. I guess I just need the feedback works. What's in your voice here?
Could you send the address to the library?
Um, I don't know what you have. There was a seven dollars box or something? How much was it?
It's enough to the library because I'm just looking at it now. It has, it is the library. I didn't think of it. If you did.
I don't know. I think it's cheaper than that. I went to the three different companies. Yeah, like, I'm gonna make this more good video. And anyway, I have a lot of use for the box. It's just based on like a standard, you know.
Yeah.
But we give the box back to the shredder box.
Yeah.
And then they provide a certificate of destruction. That's provided to everybody, so.
Don't forget, you all have to document what you destroyed and when and how on your destruction law. You should all be keeping.
Yeah, as best you can, if you can get their forwarding like that, that container, just what's yours? And what's Alex's company? Could you be secondary those into files? So you can never. I believe that's an email.
TM, that whole thing is ours.
Right. Between you and I, it doesn't count.
I just agree. You guys have a certificate, so it's specifically looking through.
Well, then I know you like to break it, but to them, I know who it is. You've promised off and then we have a time here. Do you want us to let you lock on the bathroom and let's take it out and put it on main office? It doesn't miss the time. It just said it to you.
Okay.
I feel like we're looking to take it out of that bathroom.
I would say probably, um, yeah. Friday, this is out of concern. But the one is going to the break.
Oh, there's a wrench on it. Like I have three directions.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna say as most of the work is possible.
Yep.
So by the way. We are setting up a, it was ongoing, which is the intent is just to have people, but they get close enough themselves rather than us having to process all your information and everything. So please still be sending out that. And just wanted to go through the shredding and all of that. But we are setting up that. Now with the format, looking forward, it's gonna just be. It'll go up a bit. They'll take care of all that. The winning bid, they'll go to the town hall's office for the receipt. They'll write a line title for this. We'll go for this one. They'll go to the town hall for the receipt or invoice. So hey, that amount, whoever's the partner is, they're called the town hall. Like, hey, they're coming, I got a hobby. So Joel's guys have that. Pull up the invoice, page share, meet them, have a statement, just go with it. Well, what company? I believe we just have a, they seem, yeah, they just have a, there's a, there's several that use a mountain. Is that a missing word or is it successful? Yeah, there's three real companies. Sorry, I don't have that in my spare work, but. Go seem like almost user friendly for us. Just people. Yeah, because I don't think that we're off these where they get charged to the bidders. Yeah, that's what. Yeah, they don't make a percentage for us. Those are the main things I have. I have, uh, also, I would consider, I have just a rock on line that I ran. The line ran clear or? Oh, you're a dead. Okay. Well, I got six things.
The last thing of this is we're gonna pick away at a lot of events that work at one of town halls. We're getting a lot of juice nights and weekends. So eliminate the problem. Uh, Paul.
Nothing really, just came up with budget stuff, regular stuff. I went to a conference two weeks ago. I was only able to go to two of the conferences, but I was on even to our eleven HR. So I've got a few things I'm gonna come up with too. And then one was on the one, but it wasn't what I liked. We talked about children. Was not useful.
So we came, we fell, it was every.
But yeah, just keep in mind with the record.
One thing, and I want to think about first, there's one thing good about that is that during the off time, you get to talk to everybody else. It's like something.
That's why I was more just mad.
That's something that's better than the conference. So, uh, Paul.
Let's see. Free land. I'm in the neighborhood. We do the department, the police department. And I have a department, I don't think, that's a great community and we have a hundred people. And the K Club humped out. High school band was there. It's really fun to work out with the weather. Starting to believe we're not getting, look for counselors for summer camp. There's, I went to a conference and a meeting with local, um, back characters. And there's a statewide problem with getting counselors. So I'm starting early, so if you know anybody or ask me all the people coming back from last year. I'm getting, uh, I've only got about three reports coming back. And I'm not sure if my camp directors can come back or not. If you have to have surgery, so. If you know anybody, or if you have ideas about how to work people.
What type of degree?
So they get, the counselors can be as young as fifteen. And they usually tap out by twenty-one when they're twenty, when they're going to college. But fifteen and up, anybody, um, they don't have to have experience with kids necessarily. But they should definitely like to work with kids. It's forty hours a week, either seven to three or nine to five. I don't know. Eight weeks. I know that it's forty hours a day. And, you know, nights can begin off. I don't think, I realize that, you know, Duncan Donuts and everybody else has sixty donuts. You can work at nineteen or twenty begins. If you like kids, it's a great, it's a great job. It's a great business. Spend some time field service and do one thing with kids. So it's not that easy, but a lot of people tend to enjoy it, especially if they're going into the, uh, the field.
And so.
Okay, great. Return to that. Okay, great. Paul, so you each other's school, so they have a site, a website that they will establish. They're gonna ask for the National Art Society and the K Club both to announce about their meetings. You know, it's time to beat the tough against the, yeah, you will. But yeah, I know a lot of kids who've been at the hospital for twenty-one years, but that's fading a little bit. I don't know what is better, but. Yeah, I haven't really started that much. Actually started this summer. So I've been asking the old staff if they want to come back. But we don't want to get back there. That would be a bigger problem because it really would be good if somebody that knows the camp and not somebody from outside. I don't remember that pops up a day that is the big candidate for that, so. And the recreation director doesn't want to go back and do that as well. But anyway, uh, to the concert with the grant. So we had another meeting with the people from the grant. And presented our ideas for the playground, uh, five rows, seven stands. And presented our ideas about just taking the whole thing away, playing a new playground, but reusing some of the things that are there. Some of the equipment, resurfacing and redoing some of the other stuff that was, um, critical in that, helping out with that. There's some, something has to go that will replace with things. So given that, we can help you out and say something, but given that, I mean, I do kind of amend our proposal. And we all kind of walked away from it. I'm wondering if you just want to do the grant. It's worth the aggravation, the pay for it, the scrutiny, the, oh, I also have an uncle from graphics. And she gave us a list of things that, um, to work on and that overall she went ahead of reusing some of the stuff that's, that's there.
Yeah, they have a way of keeping some of the. They had, they had ones that, but they had, it was pretty good feedback from them. It's horrible that they don't want to see there any longer. Also, it was stuff we could, you know, do, would not pass the standard, but especially to the families. Yeah. Um, the problem with the grant, those guys spent most of that out always telling us everything that they couldn't do with, you know, how. I think our plan for the money was uncovered this year in order to move that property. It's just to spend that specifically on apparatus for the playground. And what became, came up over particularly was Caitlin and Paul that were in that. Is just buying these things so that we had, that was twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, from the orar or the fast last year. So buying those things, but I don't think it has to be decided today, but it does come to see that this grant is really helping us. It's just putting more restrictions on us and the other issues that we've heard before. There is the fact that it won't be eligible for national park funding in the future, but we can bring new playgrounds there for the park that we get. So this will be the last one that we've got to do. I'm sure by the time I get to your park, we're watering the bridge. A whole different generation here, perhaps, that tells us all the things you can't do with money, I'm gonna do this. But it, like, it just kept, I got a lot of these old issues that could resolve and, and just not, and you throw a whole concept sketch. And it's my worst, my regret, but it just couldn't, like, get what we were going for. It was very basic as well. Yeah, one would say something that the other one contradicted, and one got off the ball, and the other one, I could never think of what was the staff. But it's just pretty frustrating. On papers, forty thousand dollars. In reality, we'd spend most of that just giving them compliance with what they want. And everything's just aren't completely necessary.
Plus, that thing would be tied up forever to recreation, to activity, basically.
Including the sun will fail and that will fail. And the whole area would be. Yeah, recreation. I mean, granted, I think we shouldn't be driving, you know, APW heavy trucks in the playground, I guess, you know, plus more. And we're better without all that traffic anyway, just to avoid that, but. Yeah, they just felt that us, you two, the important thing was there, that graphics came out and then the problem that was we rejected. Um, they didn't feel that, that the needs of the grant, they felt that it was standard things, which I guess it basically made, but. It just didn't seem like they were buying in on our, they wanted to buy this monstrous piece of playground equipment versus individual pieces. You know, what came up was basically for smaller kids, you know, stuff that's geared towards smaller kids and more shady. It's the other thing we're gonna back. I think all of those are equal in the money that we have from the, the more I hold from the donation of markers. And then, and then there's, uh, like, Rob, I mean, it's fine, I know. That we can tap into it potentially if we cover this year or the next year, in between those. We should be able to give the people a product that they, you know, they want and want.
Without all the statements attached and all.
Yeah, without talking about productivity and then do this, that, and then they, and then change the line. Like, they weren't even covering the concept for the survey, and then they said they could cover the concept. Yeah, we just could not get a permit on what they would actually pay for. So I just get the feeling that we're gonna go, even though we've given them a concept of what we've done. They're gonna turn around and just be like, well, that doesn't work, that goes, and that doesn't.
I mean, to be fair, that's what, we're on the ground, we're gonna replace the little playground. A little, you know, a different idea of reusing, maybe just practical and more throwing. We can.
So just to say, Paul, those were the pilots that like said, contact the graphics and the pilots and Phil's been right there alongside him. A lot of people come up with different ideas and try to work everything out. After the meeting, I picked up a conversation with Phil and I thought might be, before we say no, just to go to our first, okay? And see if they agree with it. If you're great, you don't have to say no. Before we say no, we have a meeting, you know? I don't know what I'm saying, but I'm not gonna assume. Money that's in front of the desk, do I need to provide to make some bad for us? You know, you gotta, the, the channel of communication or whatever. It's not as good as that. I think those, like, the, between Phil and Paul and Rick, I think what they want to have a vision and I think it'll all work out. Ryan, I think we should say no, that's all.
If you did decide to say no, good. Nice letters to get the hell out of there.
Yeah.
Paul, you guys were really good again.
Did you get my email? So I just sent it this morning. So I'm gonna, I think it's good if we have that nine-one-one address listed anyway. Because we play football there or whatever. Um, so file just, uh, number a little differently. So all the eight numbers from the outside starts at on the left side. So the last house is gonna be, so I'm gonna make the playground and Como Field fifty. So basically, you know, the color of the contact and I'm gonna tell you.
Like, I think that we could put that on the sign. If, um, I think if you assign out the main road, saying playground this way, and then mark the playground, give it the rules and stuff, I think. Numbering it.
Yep.
Probably good, if they have those, if they have a little like, if they have those, the number of the houses.
You don't have those, we're gonna do this by. Yeah, we just throw them aside and tell them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I have a few fun fact stories for you. So far, we've had a two million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in taxes. So that means we have eight million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand to clarify this on repeat. Um, that would, just, and what I thought for cash, this, this should be something a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. You'll be amazed at how many people coming in as three thousand, six thousand dollars out there.
We don't want to double that with cancer.
We don't want to do that. And what, what the three hundred and ten thousand, either online, without visa, or residency, or two times. So just.
So is there any over collections for this guy?
Yeah. Um, the other thing is this week, so I probably today or tomorrow, that would be certified my third home earth. And if you know it, someone has a child at home with a midlife. They have to bring their child into the office and I have to certify.
Really?
Yeah, so.
But they exist.
So you have to be at your apartment.
No, I have to. Um, I, one way of taking down the divide, that's between the windows. People keep walking into it and go, they don't, I don't think about taking it down.
What did you open?
The divide. You know that we have two windows and there's a, a split divide and we're gonna go with it. And we put a blue tape across it because people kept walking, it's still walking. So thinking about taking it down.
So.
And, um, just so you know, I'm off this Thursday and Friday. I'm going for a couple of days. And, um, that one rule I would like to ask the selectmen to, and all of us to work on for next year is communication and community. We need to, we need to keep working on that. I still think it's an issue. A little bit. And then.
You don't worry about it.
We have, we don't worry about it. It's great. I do, but I think we still.
Yes, yeah. I have ideas and some of this stuff, but I didn't, uh.
Like trust fall?
That's what's up.
So we're just doing, like, just something, maybe, I just think we have to be better. Um, and then the last thing is I have the time on for Richard's service.
Human services for us.
Exactly. Um, we did some food gift cards, some to the well. We had a generous president give us eight turtle turkeys, twenty turtle turkeys, which was awesome. We really appreciated that. Um, Christmas, we have a giveaway tree program underway. Everyone should have your lists or tags, whether they're custom. Um, we're gonna do food and gift cards again. The first date we come for that is December twelfth. So that's where you can see what people want to know. Budget should be set. I hope, I think we're okay with budget. Um, the assistant's request was to slow down a little bit and it was announced for a couple of weeks. And then it slowed down to break as the holidays come up. We're gonna see that for the end of the year, but we keep an eye on that. And I'm still working, kind of reviewing and updating for most of the reasons. We had to roll some more packs out for dreams. I think it was, which I guess. They go, well, coming, they'll be six of them. It's one of these businesses who requested like eight tasks and then they call it eight, two days later, they're like, we need more tasks. Just give them.
So.
That's awesome. It's, the gym has a nice full line.
But then I've seen the fire station staff twenty-four seven, so it's only gonna drop off people. So if people looking for a place to go or somebody, you know, asking for cops or whatever, uh, you know, they can always drop it off there if you guys are.
Those are the people assistance. Not exactly work as part of, like, people still have this little framework this year and then they can redo next year as a kind of a one-stop thing.
Or is each week just season?
Say again?
Each week just season.
Okay, so it's like, so then that group launch. So the people pretty much get new state assistance now. We would see the best until next year, I think.
I don't, from what I understand, it's an apparent sort of great vibe that they do not get, they have more advocates than we. And if people were not giving them.
I know they increased the money, but the cost fewer is tripled. So that's why, that's why I wonder if we're gonna get, get come.
I think I'm still gonna hear, I already feel like we need all your requests for our this winter. And that's kind of early for my, that's hardly, you and I, you may make the first.
And then when you do that, you make sure they already exhaust that the state.
Exactly. Yes, that's in terms of.
I think it's gonna get bad.
I anticipate that. And then the electricity cost is supposed to be going up to September first. So when people start getting low bills, it's sort of saying, come. But as far as saying, well, many of the requests, certain energy services got a few assistance. That all that information is now, that residents should have that information now. It's to come along with the usual, what I understand, but they ever should have that information. No, I don't want to holiday, so people will kind of lay low for a little bit.
It's actually been a little long too. You're not necessarily seeing it, it's been hard so far.
See, I expect it to be a request.
Okay.
Well, listen. Never. First thing, Paul, for giving me this, sending around my, my. So just, we have a lot happening at the library, so I just put arrows next to the holiday. They, they keep starting with the cookie spot. Uh, holiday breakout, we have just like a breakout room in Marcus for the teens on the thirteenth. We have a holiday super tonight called the Polar Express. Sixteenth, the movie Polar Express. We have Hanukkah, the Norolei, and Trino, and P, Caroli. We have Hanukkah, the Norole, and Gendry, and P, Caroling, and Elsulpe, and then New Year's party for the kids, so we, we, uh, have a lot going on, November was quiet, so we could really do a lot with the sound.
Is the New Year's party for the kids on the third weekend?
Yeah, so that, uh. It's very, very scary. So this happy New Year. Happy New Year. Um, Marissa Ross, a bunch of, of gift ads, have us down, still, already. Um, friends in the library go in to give books along with the toys, so friends are paying for that. Marissa gave me this to the kids' interest, so I'll be purchasing, we'll be allowing her the books for those kids. Um, we have a lot going on, but the, the third thing I think now, so we're being on the survey, is we want a survey to count about, um, what they think the library is, what they think we do, what they want from the library, so we're preparing that for next year, so we can get strategic plan for twenty twenty-three. We wrote our mission statement that we don't look at on yet, have a vision, and that's gonna lead into, into the survey, which I really just need to, to find, too, and I think I'm gonna get in touch with the human agent, happen to look at the survey, make sure that we are doing a good job with it, and everything information we need, um, to move forward. And I don't know the best way to get the survey out, to, to citizens, I was wondering if you had any ideas for that? I had mentioned tax, but, and somebody said, "You don't want to do surveys, it's tax." So I don't know, if you have any ideas for that, but I'd welcome some questions.
So, I've done surveys for my car, but it's actually on some of the end of the town, uh, but I do survey them, so it's free. You just send it through email, and if you have email lists, or, uh, you know, you can put it on Facebook, you can put it on a town website, you're all able to, to go through that, and it's all, the dad's all calculating for you. Um, but, that's what I mentioned before.
And did you use lists from town websites?
Uh, like, so, just in my pockets, I have a reason, um, but, uh, I don't know, some sort of correct mail, or from online.
Because that's what I'm trying to get everybody, even, um, I buy those records, so people break up, and things kind of.
Would, would you be able to add, like, to, to the kitchen, to the, 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 the? So that all the areas, and a lot of those, yeah. But the way, insane, you know?
And I, I think if you brought it to all of us, I can go on the MyCar website, or Facebook, or these website, Facebook, all of, I don't know.
Although, my dad, he has a, he has a, a town Facebook site. Where information only, you know, we got an answer back. Oh, come on. But a lot of people think that the other page is a town page, when it's not, so, pretty uncomfortable with something, but, make sure they know this is the official site.
Just keep in mind, when you put those surveys on social media, you may get responses from other citizens. Uh, just like, like, say, like, these society, that against a work ethic, thousands of people sign that, you know, like, like, slaves, but. So, just take that into account, and you can get, from that, factor, that's something that should be there.
You could also, if you, of course, the carriage thing, if you want to say, you just to, take the survey and get the specific site, but I would approach the thirty-five class meetings that we have, and see if they are, of this ability to use. Even if you didn't, but, uh, copy this, if they were to send it, they'll make for their mailing list. Because they haven't yet, oh, other, other, like, can be really involved. Same as the school, the school may have, you know, this as well. The more the work you can get, the better, because I think, I think, if you don't, you're not going to be able to do it for Facebook.
I did also, maybe, to keep that, I went through that, uh, social media, also, you put the other, it's very complicated, I think, to do it, really, probably. Uh, the one thing, I really want the manager's page, um, if you really share, so I just page on the left-hand side, there's a little blog that says, "Terms of Use." I would recommend creating one of those, because essentially, by the way, the page, anything that the pages are ready for that terms of use, and this is good language, and they have four terms of use, so you can add, uh, to your, 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 but, uh, I have a, 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 a.
The schools then, uh, all the schools then, uh, we, 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 uh, here. Okay.
Done? Please, last, please.
Everything's still really good, uh, with the lights here. Uh, we're in the process of building that power, uh, government safety, actually, the right of mine, it's pretty impressive. Um, built up a work on that. Um, a lot has been donated, we've got maybe eighteen thousand rest to do it, and, probably seventy-five thousand as well, probably more, uh, we have to move on. I'll talk to you later about that. Um, that's gonna save the cars, and hailstone, with not the jockey around, and make it easier for popping, be, be, level of the cars are not, um, one be the hailstone, take out our fleet, and we're really, pretty lucky. The back view is good, to be in a safe way, in a power board, and a lot of us drive, because it's a damn keeper safe from hailstone. So, now it's a reward, uh, you can drive those on there, so it's a perfect time. Um, rouse good, no complaints, we just good. It's all good.
For inspection, available for inspection versus what constitutes creative products. So there's 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 better logic if it's based on every case on the tab than just the past few years. Especially with the slide sheet, uh, some of the lawsuits that happened in the U.S. versus uh, and just for state courts. So there's a recent case law that really influenced uh, will be.
Another source, another good source is the social library. It's a state law library where your service is the correct. The name of it is an escher.
Yeah. There was a policy there when that kid was going around with a camera frame that touched people. First of all, yeah, uh, so you know, we feel that pretty much as we get first of all, and I mean, this guy is kind of focused on that, and it really is a bit, it's, I think we're after that whole, not the policy.
How do I remember this?
That's a year of, yeah. So we should take a look at that, just to make no errors, I mean, within that policy, some individual departments have a different. With the ninety-one, I assume that those departments have flexibility, whatever they can, you know, for the time of us. Obviously, if it doesn't work, they need to see the legal, maybe the private offices.
And let me repeat that, just any other, and then the other thing is, I would like to. So I'm making kind of our carrier, a three percent paid performance raise. That we do every year to evaluate and determine how to close out. Department heads are supposed to turn and raise this that they want to give their people, not including their performance per COLO. And COLO is the variable that's still under debate. Whether we put it on a ballot or not, I have said that it should go on the ballot, so people think it should. So we need to make that decision and how much it is. I think that if we put it on a ballot and get it known, that we can't do anything.
That's true.
And, you know, maybe we were, it's just for this year, so we have something in the future, but I think, uh, if we did last year and include it in our budget. And even three or four percent that we've talked about, the average year sunk down from getting seven, they immediately, you can add two instances. So that's the variable we need to decide what to do.
And the function of that budget, I ask the budget, yes. We agree, we agree, we're talking about the budget, obviously, you know, there are some that are astronomical, and they actually, actually, that is astronomical. There are some companies that are coming in with six, seven percent, but at the end of the day, we also still have to propose, propose something that will pass the voters. Uh, so I asked the budget committee the other day, if we, as a basic looking at the budget, if all the departments put in a four percent cost of living on the budget, that could be okay for this. But that's not saying that's what it is. That's saying the budget committee can then look at that cost associated across all the clients, look at everything else in the budget, and then the budget committee can make their interpretations of what they're going to recommend for it. Now they can say, okay, we have to do this and this, and whatever, higher than that, or lower than that, or whatever. But the thing I can say, do I actually, do we, do we possibly keep up? Yes, absolutely, that makes sense, the fact that the public sector, now it keeps on the private sector as far as salaries, and that's why the private, these situations will attract them. Like, yeah, it's so long, but if we propose something that voters are going to vote in motion, they have less money in their head accounts, their money is, their money is worth less what they have in there because of inflation. Their, you know, the cost of energy is going to be more, the oil, electricity, fuel for their cars. What I don't see is, I don't want anyone to just go in there and be like, I'm sure I'm going to go on and on, I'm looking for anything, nobody gets, nobody gets possibly, I may ask people to see that, but there has to be someone. Um, but we have to make something that's valid. Do I wish I could make a record and say, wait a minute, one, say, yes, I need all of those, or this, or what it still has to do with those voters out there, remember, more than this twenty-five, twenty-five. So I asked the budget committee, what is a level we can start with that if they would be liberal with the rest of the budget over there? And at our last meeting, they agreed to the four percent, and all of us thought that that was a good start, we can accommodate that budget. But this is that, this is also the part of, we need to be selling our entire account to everybody. We, they need to understand that we support this. Bottom, because everyone just thinks, oh, let's not hear the taxpayers, well, let's not forget, when you are employees and aren't taxpayers, they are citizens. This is incumbent on us to make sure that I'm getting the community that these are good, hard, good citizens, taxpayers in our community, and they deserve to be paid appropriately, we understand everyone's thinking, all right, they are. So I'm hoping that departments are advocating that compliment employees in town, advocating themselves, telling my friends and family members that, you know, I've had a bit of tough times, and everything's going on, we understand. We want to retain all the people that are given, so. That's, that's, that's what I think, I think, that we need to be said, that if everybody puts their budget to account for the portion rates, that gives an apple to apples, across the board, the budgets we need to look at. And then they can give, you know, because if everyone comes in, their department's getting, you know, they, their government's seven percent rates, because their department's two percent rates. How are we to find our employees that are employee in their departments just as difficult as they think?
I think we do the four percent, and I think we do it within the budget, if not, if not.
I, I agree, and everything, then everyone is, it's two, it's that's the whole difference was, we want to change the personnel policy, we can add the audit borders in, that was the difference. So if we want to keep stats quo, hold on, in performance, I can say we keep stats quo, if we want to change the personnel policy, mainly, that was the difference.
But I have a couple things. One, the, the raise that I'm bringing in for Kelly, that goes for the budget maybe, because it's in my budget. So I'm going to go with the budget maybe, say, uh, you know, I'm changing my salary line, you're like, Kelly's five percent rate, uh, I'm negotiating, negotiating that, and, you know, Kelly's five percent.
You, you're not negotiating and putting the five percent in because it merits for position to have that and keep us competitive and keep our here.
But when I, when I take my salary line, like I say, why I change my salary?
Maybe you tell them.
Oh, well, and, and. One is, if you're going to do it, what you can do now, our last meeting actually technically is Wednesday night, so we've talked about a lot of different things, so if we're going to make any changes, we can do it today, but tomorrow.
To call it, or to whatever it is.
We can do well, because Paul puts it together on this spreadsheet, it's clear, right, for now. The other thing we need to ask the question is, is that the budget committee wants to see if we're going to do a five percent. So next year, five percent, and Mr. Kelly, I mean, to say that, what percentage does it do versus failure?
The, the way all this, the individual chains happen, like I'm going to go to select them, we understand the necessity order because of the times we're dealing with, that it should be a second. It should be that you're preparing for these type of raises within the budget, so it's got to be most important to go, you want to.
So anybody bringing in, for individuals or their kids, if they're bringing in for call guys or whatever, we need to know, the budget committee needs to know, once, how much, one, two, who, who we get. And that's something that actually Paul's working on.
Why do they need to know who gets?
Well, I think they need to know, Jack, I think they need to know the decision.
Jack, I see, okay.
So what, this is not a personal, they agent to settle, I don't like Paul, so I'm going to give them, do.
No, but they're actually, for, um, it's been given to them before, the spreadsheet that was used.
Yeah.
Just have it updated to like this year.
Yeah.
Uh, it is, it was each, like, each line, you know, April, I would say, so like officer full-time, or call, or, or whatever, you know, it's a whole list of every single item. And what was paid, how much they were paid, how much was in the budget at the beginning of the year, what it was so far, if there was a pay increase, you could, I might put it on whatever, right, I know. When the pay increase went through, and where did it come from, whatever. So they want to make sure that if, I'm just going to use, I'll use, uh, the fire for, for example, let's say the fire, like, twenty thousand dollars, okay? Yeah, it raises it, but where did that twenty thousand come from? Did it come from the game online, like budget line, or did you take it out of office expenses, whatever, uh, that's what they want to know. He's allowed to take it out of office expenses, but they want to know where did that money come from for that increase?
And they want to know that because?
Well, mainly because we did a lot of raises mid-year, and they didn't like that.
And where did, so where did?
They're trying to say, there was another one, over his late, they just asked me that, which, which, it's, it was, uh, I had, I had most of that emotional money, it was hard, and this is out of my, they can, yes. I think that's what happened, you know, the majority.
They want to make sure that we, we don't need computer maintenance anymore, and that's where they got that money to make up for their raises, and let's get that out of there. Because we don't need the raise, the money in salary, plus this computer maintenance that's not being used, and that will reduce, they're trying to figure out ways to reduce the budget without getting rid of.
Yeah, and I, I think somebody came up this year, people were like, well, we have our own funding, or we can expect some stuff, so maybe they did.
And that's the other thing we have to decide, is if we want to pull Steph and Arjo, 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 first, but, whatever, how we're going to do it, what, when, and how.
So just before we go, bring out another thing, so COLO, is that, that's four percent, is that going into our budget, so if you're keeping that COLO?
That should be just sort of, we just.
Everybody has to do a COLO.
What I'll do is, I'll date everyone's department, and just add that line.
You have like, the, the, the?
No. But I'll date each department's, uh, their budget form, and I'll have that kind of, but just so you know, we have that conversation, we had a conversation earlier this morning, is that COLO budget will never have an actual expenses. Does that make sense? Because that actual, if you're looking at your budget over the year, you're not spending, you're not doing, that COLO, say COLO, and it'll be, uh, five thousand dollars, right? But there'll never be actual expenses against it, it's always only in that salary, because it's too hard to break out, because you're just putting someone up, let's say fifty cents, you know, like you're not, so you're going to see an empty, next to the budget line out, does that?
Yeah, because the COLO is really.
COLO will be there, but then the actual will be there.
That's what it was last, last year, before she made COLO.
I just wanted to make sure.
Also, it was a, you know, ten thousand dollar line, and I, 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 it was a goal.
It's, they, they got paid by the top, and they do totally.
Just off of that, and what I'm going to do is look into where the money from salaries came from, to point for that little line, for example, our salaries, three, seven thousand dollars still sitting there in the little line, that's done, so that can be pointed.
In, in, if Chris was correct, it helps because the way he says, you know, he kept for a position, and when he's unspent, even though he earlier hired right down the road, he had nothing that was still in the budget.
We can't, uh, we can't look at COLO as a way, or I can't say that, I can't tell you five percent rate is where my head, that's just, I mean, uh, five percent with COLO, it's COLO, it was.
Different, and, and what, so I was, um, talking, I was talking to some of the budget, budget committee members, they said, you know, they were trying to figure it out, so they knew that they had, I don't remember what the COLO three percent last year. They knew what the budget was, they knew what the COLO was, the COLO they raised, uh, they were, they added that into all the salaries, and they were trying to figure out how we got to where we are now, like with the numbers, and they were having very hard time.
Well, it was a challenge for us as well, to be the way.
So that's why they don't want to bring the three percent up.
I think that we don't know which one, I, I.
No, no, that's not the one, I, I, I meant that it's just a free.
And that's, and that's fine, because I know that we, we have a total budget, yes, and both of you, all of us, we have to stay, we have to have a technical, that's our intent.
So the only issue I have, because trustees voted on our five percent and also getting paid for form, paid for performance, that has to stay the same, because that's what the trustees.
Then they don't just pay the pay for performance to the sweat, or is that?
No, no, right, no, we are.
And also, one of the things that I, I have to, I have to give my hope that, of course, that we really have no chance of voters supporting unless a select for the budget committee, and we're going to have a partner that's, or have a unified voice, moving forward, by the way. There's a dissent above us, the budget committee, if voters are looking at a split decision on the budget committee, or split decisions on the select, or not supporting the budget, we know that we can, as, as the project manager, operate this, can't, you know, come to a, come to a conclusion with that, or be, you're finding that the budget, I don't think.
So my, my last, uh, anyway, so if we go to fall in March, because COLO was in our budget last year, do we still raise every single?
Yes.
I believe yes, I believe, I believe this will.
We have a split decision.
I know what I said, but it'll be three, it will not be four.
No, it's good.
It'll be the three.
And it might not be there last year as much as. But what you're saying, so again, if mine's ten thousand dollars, it should be eleven thousand dollars this year, because everybody know you got that for last year?
That's correct.
So if they're not getting enough money in there, are you going to raise it to three percent or you?
If the amount of three percent, all three percent, three percent, three percent, and then one percent, if it's the wrong, that's a, that's a, that's a. Now, still, we, 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 we.
I said, if you could, if, just for just that, that, and all of us, call the, like, to, to, to.
He said, no, you're not going to give it to me, because I think the last question.
I'm kind of allowing you to make it, the line, and, and, but, but.
Rather than just coming from one side, I would be there to say, "I'm more passionate than you."
The budget may not stand, but even when I took my coal line out of this year, it dropped by an increase significantly. So if we're all adding coal back in...
Right, I'm sure that there is a direct impact.
Right, so that's, they're going to be the primary input and increase.
But, but, I mean, the two that are on the agenda, the representation of the budget, maybe to counter, to counter inclusion, how do you want to move the budget over? For that especially, I don't know, the salary.
But to bring, like, to bring Miami system up or fight higher from, I have been having twenty-one dollars an hour. The full time fight, whether bringing up to twenty-four, they're going to ask a question.
And I would say, you can come and make it so, just like we're going down.
So, I suppose we will ask the next one.
No, I don't want that. Kevin's, Kevin's in the white suit, I believe, he's welcome to come, but it's just discussing the stuff with the president, which I'm, basically, they're, they're all discussing, etc., and it's presented as very good.
Well, it's actually about who needs to go, I mean, the...
Well, this year, you got...
Particular, which is...
There are other things that might be, that we decided not to link something from the files.
That's correct. I think it's...
I guess it's a bit there. They are just, just like, we've got, so, there is...
Yeah, we should, we should close the desk, it's not going to be as well, the way I got it. Yes.
Our station, yes.
Six, yeah.
Wednesday is Monday.
Monday.
So, I apologize that I don't know how this ended. This summer, we talked about, um, defending, changing personnel, policies for longevity and tuition movement, all that stuff gets asked.
You got past it, this new two-year kind of interview, that's the problem, we had a request of tuition reimbursement, but we don't have, we talked about, I was thinking, three thousand dollars into tuition reimbursement, but we don't have any steps on how to apply them, the deadline, uh, any limitations that might be in place. So, that's a, it's a probably the same thing with longevity, we can't give a five percent older in longevity, we haven't talked about it at all, so...
So, we're just going to ignore that?
I, I think so, I mean, listen...
We talked about early lineups and the workflows, because it wasn't the policy that matters, it is.
But Jay, I may have a procedure, but let's keep going.
But that's a question that I'm going to put on the board of directors.
If you haven't handed out that policy manual for this time, so, so, you don't need to...
Well, did, did we vote it on, yeah?
We did vote, you know, for that.
Or, don't have, like, no one has this policy manual.
My, that's a, that's a shame to do.
No, no, I have it, it's not, you know, I, you know, that's a, that's a policy.
And since it's present, the group updates are not being, rather than it's like, too many.
Right. You guys want to question?
Excuse me, but we need to have a language, because for employees participating in tuition reimbursement, it's got to be a procedural process of what's expected, then reverse, and, and whether there's any limitation, that's going to be spelled out. Longevity, you and the employee also need to know that, because is that, I mean, once they get the longevity, I mean, they get, they don't get the, the coal, that they don't get the, 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 the performance, that's what it is spelled out, so that it's clear, the, the expectation is clear. You don't want to mislead people as to what they can get, you're not going to be only just some longevity, three percent, four percent coal, and, uh, your performance is a common pocket.
But one of the benefits of the point, if you're going to want to, you can put in another cent, perhaps, well, it's the same with the, those are benefits for the town, it's a case of, and that's it. So, why, that's why we're talking about the procedure, that's the benefit of it. You know, we have all, because, excuse me.
I'm just using this next step, because I...
Well, the other thing, when we talk about the tuition reimbursement, we say, if we do three thousand dollars, Phil comes in with the bill for three thousand dollars, because he got, he might turn four classes, do we give it to him? Or do we say, no, you can pay with that one, because we're holding it in case.
But that's why you need a procedure, because then we can get two classes in January, two classes in September, get the two classes in, in January, ask for a thousand, and he could apply for fifteen hundred dollars once a class, he's got issue, I would think he never applied, I don't know who that was coming. He went, he doesn't see it.
Well, he takes the whole three thousand, then Susan comes in and she took a class, and she won't serve the guy.
And they, they have the best, with, that's the chance of...
That's where, that's where I'm saying, I don't need the, like...
You, if no one applies for the second half of the year, and you have taken classes, but, yeah, you could get out of the runs, and we did, I mean, and, and I, it said, I don't need to be there.
That's required, that's who, they ask to apply, so, that's them. So, I don't know, can you say, our, our, for, for, it's like, so, when it's finally, that's, I mean, bullshit. Because, I mean, for me, it's not a problem, it's, it's not unheard of that day, here's something else, but, he still has to have a hand in, in there for that, that's how payments end up, you know?
They should have, like, broke down their budget.
Should be that, yes.
Yeah.
Because I lost some money.
Most of our budget, rocks and shovels, whatever, and those guys have the holiday, get the, they're... But I'm saying, no, but then, so, if this is the way that we're free, we have to go over to the region, and you get, and all the badge for all somewhere, that, you're going to organize that, but, yeah.
Doesn't, try to explain to us, and actually, the table that we're kind of, when we're second, you would need a budget for it, because then...
Well, certainly, I know it's, I know it's not right, but my budget, forty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks, so, if he takes leave, then he's hot. The coverage would be coming out by the time, so...
That's good, that's...
That's what I, I guess, I'd say, same here.
But that's a new constraint, that you are, I mean, I just basically figured eighteen percent is what, based on this, you know, previous map, and, you know, what's online is basically, and then, this is a new factor that isn't considered in the, in my, I guess, I don't know, I just have a word up top, I have, maybe we just want to sit down and look at that, and working on some scenarios that could potentially be a problem.
I have a folder, um, with the new personnel, manual, and all kinds of content, so, I'm looking to see what she's having inside on, actual, like, thoughts.
Yeah, I have, I have a little past that, because there was one on the show, this, this is the most, of, information.
She didn't send it in, I feel longevity, I don't know, how much, right?
All right, we're getting really long, we're getting, getting far, uh, I don't know if you guys want to stay for...
Should be, you want, you want to make some?
What, yeah, if you have anything to play. Bernie, will you come up, find the seats someplace? Those, those are late for, for the, uh, race, maybe more. Okay, back to, uh, you all, um, we sent it to the, to the, seeking twenty thousand, all ultimately, to help, to help us, uh, we were a bit, basically, fired. We didn't reply for that, um, our application was accepted, and, um, it was, so, right now, uh, the next, the little grant process is to, um, have, uh, hold the, to accept the grant, almost able to enter, um, we, uh, it's, it's a, it's actually a finance, uh, application process, so, uh, but the grant is not official, um, until the executive council meets, decides the application grants to various, so, we're in the running, uh, for those who are in the back, who don't, know for sure until the, it's a, it's a, uh, so, tell you two things, we need to do, probably, here, in a second, okay? And then, the second thing is, we need to, uh, complete what's called the logistical certification authority, which identifies, because that's, signing all the, like, so, it's in that picture. Customarily, it's, 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 uh, so, those are the two things that you guys have to hold in today, uh, for those purposes. Um, the grant, overall, Susan hasn't come here, but it's, it's a typical grant, we need a lot of, we need to develop, and things like, client, who has, relationships, records, between, those, people, it's, 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 default, it's, typical language, if you're finding any kind of contract, um, so, the client is really, generally, we're asking that, and the secretary, to, 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 rehabilitation. So, this is a grant, we're reverse, uh, preservation. And that's not a problem, Phil, in this case, is well aware of this, uh, yeah, will be able to, 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 uh, needs to be completed by, uh, the first, um, for, uh, and, and, uh, there's some administrative, I am, uh, uh, which is, um, and then, final, the other, the other, so, it's pretty nice, total formal, really, it's, it's easily managed, and, uh, managed, one for, the, 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 so, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, typical level of, 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 um, once the grant is away, we, we channel the fifty percent of, of the money, so, that, and then, the remaining ten thousand, part of the, the project, and just made a final accord to, to, uh, so, again, it doesn't mean you've got, but today's activities to, make the final steps, so, we'll be able to, so, take a motion.
Well, actually, you, you got to do, at, what would, what would, what would, what would, they would get a new motion now?
Any comment, any problem?
So there was a contract for that.
Yeah, it's just a second amendment.
So how do we feel about that? Alright, then we talked about clean, clean, green, we had two bids for that position, the planner. One is for running, letting condition. And one was for playing greenwood and the planning board. According to Lynn Merrill, the plan to stay with when greenwood, he was about three thousand dollars plus. And his thing is not really in a contract, so we have a request to contract for it. Anybody have an issue with that?
No, I think that we have, did we have whether we continue on as a planner, who that, should have had a planner.
Is he something his, his employees?
No, I don't know if that's a question I've been talking about. I think we've been talking several times and I can think of.
She keeps working.
Okay, where, okay, where, if there's contract, we'll specify. Well, it's okay, we need a contract specifically for services he's providing. So that is to not which we had perhaps would just be the good contractor. And I, I would love to recommend there that not ask for defaults, but we're doing, we're doing that. I think this is probably, um.
Well, you know what, we, he's still on our case, we just send this, well, in five years.
Now, it looks like in the mid-December.
That's ridiculous.
It, it, that's, I mean, that's.
Do we have a second comment?
Okay. Uh, so we're going to switch motion, um, we have all set. Discussion, all is, is, uh, note. Um, yeah.
You've got it.
Uh, you guys refuse. I actually do, so I actually do. Need a motion for that. Second. Discussion, all is, is, uh, note. Motion carries. It looked like there's a request aside on this. Good. Okay, it's all good. Okay, Bill, it's going to be done to a minimum. Up to a minimum request. Yes, these were mistakes, change in condition, base bill. One is fifteen bills, where, after. Previous assessment, four or two, revised is three thousand, two hundred, three hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred thousand, difference is six. D seven hundred, L one is twenty-one, what, eight point. Point number two ninety-four and two seventy-eight, sixty-six.
And those represented by, uh.
Assessors. What about one hundred and fifty-two, sixty, unless that's mistaken. So need a motion to do those. I mean, most approve to, uh, I think this, as further assesses, recommendation. Discussion. Discussion, all is, is, uh, note. Uh, note, motion carries.
Anybody who has a share of, uh, science, same one, uh, agreement to for site investigation.
They decide on that. All is, is, uh, note. Note. Carries.
You guys don't need to say anything. Okay, we're trying to get this done. Who's going to speak on your behalf? Okay. Just by yourself, could you speak?
Hi, I'm, uh, should we just go right into the introduction? Yeah, for us now, we're F B Environmental Associates. We, uh, we helped write the grant for this project.
Hi, how are you? I'm Kimberly Meyer, CEO of Southern District of WYCA.
Green Michael and I are fully caper just a little for the WYCA. I started in the world.
And I'm Dave Little Town and I'm our executive director.
Neuralink is a case and lake association.
Who's going to speak?
Yeah, sure. So, um, so we're here today, uh, I guess for a couple of reasons, I think. Uh, Susan and I have been in touch with the state, with Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. And, uh, you'll remember we were here, uh, spring, I guess it was. Uh, we talked about submitting grant and, uh, we're pleased to say that I think it ranked fifth.
Fifth.
Fifth, fifth in the state of, uh, thirty or four projects. Which is a really big deal because it was usually with clean water, state would fall on loans or actual loans. Well, just, well, full forgiveness loans, um, but they made it to a grant. The top, I think, six or seven became grants. So now the state has sent the paperwork to Susan to, um, accept the grant on behalf of the, the town of Kingston. Uh, and I believe there's a formal motion needed by the town to accept that. I don't know if that's been done yet, I guess. That's one request and, um, I printed out this little front and back just to kind of, you know, I don't, I don't know what detail I'm going to, um, kind of take your lead, but I think I'll just quickly summarize what it is. If you can ask questions to any of us as possible. Um, so, uh, watershed management plan is basically, um, I call it sort of a diagnostic test for the, the lake, uh, Kingston Lake Breakon and a road map government for. Um, these are really common in, in Hampshire. Um, I've done about fifty in, in Hampshire. Um, it's a, it's partly a scientific exercise of doing more water quality monitoring to see what's happening in the lake. Um, it's important to know that when we look at, look at some of the murmurs, maybe the last year, is there some potential problems in the lakes or looking at, um, future of what they call slime bacteria blooms? I don't know if you've heard of them, but they're toxic to humans, they're toxic to pets. And we've seen a lot of this in Hampshire. So part of what we're doing is understanding the lake better, working with, um, the stakeholders to develop a plan, uh, kind of help with education, but then really put a plan forward. And the watershed management plan, once it's done and approved by the state, will, uh, basically allow the town and partners to apply for more break-ons to fix things that, you know, we find. Whether it's, it can be done in private or public property, over short-term property, a coven in town. Anything that's done to, uh, to protect the lake. Um, and, you know, all details are here. The project will start probably in the spring of twenty twenty-three, so it's, you know, not about to start. Um, the watershed map is here, so everything, the drains basically, you know, west to east in here. So you can see we, we need to get the, uh, town of Dambro at some point, you know, in the course of the, the project. Um, to, you know, see if they can become involved. Um, so I think, and the other thing I'll mention is, is, you know, there has to be a qualification-based selection process since then. So that would be hopefully an early step, uh, and, you know, we can talk more about that if we want.
Are you going to do that instead of requesting qualifications that you can send out for, for the meeting?
Yeah, we, we can, we can help with everything for sure. And the idea is, and I want to get very clear, is that the idea, I think we said this in the spring, is that this, you know, the town of Kingston, they administer, but it's, it's not meant to be a, a time sink for the town. It should take very little to administer the grant. Um, but of course it can be as small as, if like, I mean, I just pass it like my colleagues and get a move to add.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're really excited. Um, yeah, Camp Lincoln has been serving families in the community for close to a hundred years. And I think this all started, um, when Forsythe walked across the property. And, um, we're both passionate, as, as are my colleagues here, of maintaining the lake and maintaining the property. And, um, when we started talking about this opportunity, um, we, we decided this is something that we want. We need to, we need to help support the lake. We've been working with Ariel for many years. We've been, we've been part of her lake association. And we really, um, feel it's time for us to make sure that the work begins towards our property and where we serve the many and the communities which we're part of. The great thing is that sometimes it's for us correct, when it's a, um, a loan, right? The nice thing is because the state recognizes the importance, we can, um, take this grant. So we're, we're thrilled to be able to work in partnership with other stakeholders to preserve, um, Great Pond. Because it's a vital part of the community, it's a vital part of what we do. And it's so important for not only the town, but for the region, for many communities. Is there anything else that we could add?
Yeah, I think an exciting part of it is the opportunity to educate some of the residents as well. Okay, so when we talk about, um, you know, other lake fragments, uh, there's opportunities for resources within to improve the environment of the lake and stuff like that. So, you know, I think between Kings and my association, Camp Lincoln Conservation Committee, and we'll be a part of the, and part of the grant is to host some public events to talk to the public about the grant process, the portion plan, and things that they can do in their own kind of lives. And probably to kind of help, uh, the help of Kings and Lakes, I think that's going to be a part of the process as well. Getting stakeholders in the, in the town to be on board and part of the process.
Mary Ellen, I wanted to refer to you because you've been such a champion for the health of Great Pond, something here.
Well, I've been on the lake for fifty years, so, and, uh, the last session, we're very involved with the Kingston Lake Association. It's in my backyard, um, and we're very grateful for the, the amount of space both Kentwood and, and the Kingston Lake Park take up on the watershed area or on the shoreline. Because imagine if that was developed, how horrific that would be. So it's so important to protect our watershed area. And, um, I'm just delighted that we finally have an opportunity like this. I think it's bringing a huge difference, um, in support of the lakes, support of the community, in support of Kent Lincoln. It's so important and so vital.
So, so we decided to retain F B, um, because one, of course, I've heard about. And two, uh, he and his brother have done this before. So we retained him to work with him, not that it wasn't a guarantee, and I'm just overjoyed to find out that he, uh, seems to be doing well.
Um, a couple things, first of all, it's about that, it's coming up in the afternoon tonight. Forgive this, while that's, that's even better than what we came back with before, still more than originally. Um, a couple things, I would say, based on what we had this, uh, report. You understand, that we do have the, um, the policies, the biggest, the higher consultant, that's got to walk a bit. Or at least we'll get that.
Um, again, sorry, just one thought, that it sounds like it's, it, it has to be a qualification-based solution.
Right.
Because the state allows that.
Yeah, obviously, well, that's, that's not a fault.
Um, why is it a crisis?
I have no questions against one, I'm just making sure, obviously, Kent Lincoln's represented here. You know, I know that it might affect the state, but it's, I wouldn't talk with Richard's association because they take up a huge part of that side of it, too.
Yes, I have reached out to Richard Russell, he's the president, um, of the Richard Association. He's aware of this. Um, I asked him, I invited him here today, I, um, he also, he may show up, like, for being involved, I'm sure he will. But he also has a member who's very involved, um, in lake sampling as well. She's done that kind of work, Linda Person, I believe is her name. And I think she would be a part of our core group. And, um, and we, you know, it's, uh, every day for this here, Kingston Conservation Commission. Me and, and Paul Derborn from A W A. We intend to get as many people involved in our, what we call Steering Committee line. That, um, all the stakeholders, we hope to have involved so that these folks will thrive.
And if I have a question, I'm curious, like, specifically, if you still, like, all the, the coal, I suppose. Obviously, we should be, uh, trace that or attack, fix that problem.